Good afternoon. This is the special purpose local option sales tax public meeting, June 21st, 2021. Let me just say that I'm Isaiah Hughley, the city manager. You will be hearing from the mayor briefly, the honorable mayor Skip Henderson. He will greet you and then you will hear from deputy city manager Pam Hodge with a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, and then we will answer questions. That is the way the agenda is set tonight. I want to welcome those who are here in the city council chambers and want to welcome those who are watching via CCG TV or live streaming via YouTube. We are here to present a list of proposed projects for a November 2021 ballot. We are not here as staff at least to campaign because we don't campaign for projects and we don't campaign against projects. We're here simply to present to you what has been presented to us by the citizens and some things have been added for consideration by city department heads. We are simply here to educate and so we will not be campaigning for or against because we can't, we do not, and I want to make that very clear that as staff, we are not campaigning. This list of projects will be presented. Citizens can add to those projects, but once they go on the list, we're not going to take them off because if one citizen says, "Take it off," but we will present a final list to the mayor and council and they will decide from there what they will take forward if there's going to be something that goes forward on a ballot. And so we're here to educate and we're here to answer any questions that you have related to the proposed special purpose local option sales tax. And we look forward to hearing from you, those who are present, and we have a means by which those who are watching by television will be able to submit questions in real time and we will respond to those questions once they come in. Thank you again for being here in the council chambers, those who are here, and thank you for tuning in, those who are tuning in via CCG TV. With that, I'm going to ask the mayor to come and greet you and then he will be followed by deputy city manager Pam Hodge, mayor Skip Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I need to thank Chief Smith too because if it hadn't been for him, I'd be watching this on live stream downstairs. He had an extra mask. I left mine at the house. But anyway, I won't recover the same ground that the city manager did. I will just emphasize, reemphasize that this is your list. That's why we have gone, we've actually gone out, we've doubled the amount of times we've come out to the public to try to make certain that what is on this list is what we have been asked by the citizens to put on there. You'll notice it says back to basics. When we first started to compile all of this, the staff stuck to basics, no new stuff. We were all, we were looking at things that had worn out and that people of this community were depending on and we were looking at replacing or repairing or enhancing those. Can't repair, but we, with the SPOLOST, we can do some significant upgrades to them. And we also talked about that judicial center, the government center. We made a promise, we heard folks almost a year and a half, two years ago, 1,200 people a day, according to our sheriff's deputies, go in that building and those are, that doesn't include employees. So 1,200 of our citizens are coming into that building. I'm gonna get this number wrong, but I think we spent somewhere between nine and 10 million dollars over the last six years to take care of old stuff going bad in that building. And then while we took care of the old stuff going bad, we identified a few areas that there were some serious life safety issues that had just sort of developed over the years. So we had to get in there and fix those. So we had talked to the public about a year and a half ago about that building and they recognized we needed to do something about it. So that is obviously the biggest ticket on this thing, but again, I'm just grateful that y'all are participating in this, both the folks here and the folks that are watching, watching from their sofas. We count on your participation. It's vital for us to be able to be successful in making sure we're putting the kind of projects on here that the public wants. So again, thank you and I'll turn it over to deputy city manager Pam Hodge.
Good evening. I'm deputy city manager Pam Hodge and I'll spend a few minutes going through the PowerPoint presentation with you this evening. We will have the capability for anyone watching from home to submit their questions or call in their questions and we'll respond to those at the end and I'll go through that just briefly. You can go to menti.com, that's M-E-N-T-I dot com, and what you'll see when you come up, it'll have a screen that looks like this. You'll need to type in 55395403 and when you do, you'll have a screen that looks like this and you'll be able to type in your questions and at the end, we'll go through all those questions that are submitted this evening and respond to those. You can also call 706-225-3002 and I'll go through these throughout the presentation. So if you've missed it now or you're going to get a pen to jot that down, we'll provide that number again in just a few minutes. You can also, if you're in the room with us this evening, there's a comment card by the door. You can also go online and fill out that comment card on our homepage. You can see a copy of the presentation, the notice for the public meetings, which tonight is our third public meeting. You can also go to the comment card and fill that on, fill that out online and then just submit it. So that's available to you if you're not here with us this evening. So the timeline for the SPOLOST is the November 2nd, 2021 ballot. Working back from that date, the call for the election would be August the 3rd and council would adopt a resolution on July 27th in order for us to meet that timeline of November 2nd. So at this time, we're in the process of having public meetings to get input from the citizens. We started these public meetings back in 2019. So a lot of the information that we compiled was from the public meetings we had before the pandemic. When the pandemic struck, council made the decision to delay the SPOLOST vote one year and so we're kind of back again, making sure that what we heard from the citizens in 2019 still meets the desires of the citizens today. So the SPOLOST at this time is estimated at 400 million. The collection period would be approximately 10 years, might be a little less. We're on target this fiscal year to reach almost 41 million in sales tax, so it could be less than the 10-year period. We're also recommending to issue $200 million in bonds for the judicial center and all other projects would be pay as you go. As a consolidated government, if we issue bonds along with the SPOLOST, the time period is until the dollar amount is collected, not a specific collection period. We also brought on consultants to help us evaluate the government center, both architects and construction consultants, as we evaluated those options for what to do with the government center as we move forward into the future. Those four options included option one, which is the renovation of the tower with an addition on the existing site. Option two is a new complex, both administration and judicial on the existing site. Option three was a new judicial center on the existing site and the government administration building on an alternate site. And option four was new judicial, new administration building on an alternate site and the government center site would remain as it is. We also looked at, or at our consultants, looked at the space needs for all of our departments. Back in 2017, city government administration, about 102,000 square feet and relatively the same size, just up slightly at 107,000 square feet. Where we found the difference was in the court and court-related functions. In 2017, it was at 260,000. Today, for best practices, should be about 359,000. So we saw most of the growth on the court side and I'll give an example to illustrate how the court side has impacted the square footage requirements. So on the left-hand side is what is current courtroom and on the right-hand side would be best practices and this on the right-hand side would be a pair of courtrooms. So in the blue is really the courtroom space and you can see the courtroom size itself is relatively the same size as what best practices would recommend, but there's some differences in the other spaces required for court functions. The red color is inmate. So if you look on the current side, on the inmate side, we have one inmate elevator that is also a shared elevator with the judges. The inmates are housed in one particular floor in a holding cell at the government center and they're moved throughout the building on this one elevator. Best practices suggests that those inmates should be held next to those courtrooms and also provide space for an attorney-client interaction in that same location. And so you can see in the red area, it really does have a difference in square footage for best practices. The other section that you'll see a difference in is the public space. If you've gone to court at any time in the government center, you're really waiting in the hallway. You could be standing next to someone that you're going to court against. So best practices, which suggests that there needs to be a little more space for the public entering and exiting that courtroom as well as to provide some separation of those parties. So when they evaluated the government center for options, they looked at a multitude of attributes, anywhere from the site itself to the cost, to the efficiency of the building, and they really went through and rated those like a stoplight, red, yellow, and green. And immediately after looking at these attributes and the four particular options for the government center, they removed option one and option four from the list of options. Further study, they ended up removing option two and the recommendation from the consultants is option three, which is a judicial center on the existing site and administration in an alternate site. So, and this is not what a government center building would look like. This only represents the amount of square footage and the potential for the number of floors that it would need to be to meet the square footage requirements. So one of the things that we asked them to look at is how could we get the cost of a judicial center under 200 million? And we also asked them to look at an existing building model that would look at the health department model that we utilized and have administration be in a existing building retrofitted to meet the needs of the administration. So we came up with option 3A. This would be a new courthouse on the government center site. Recorder's Court would remain adjacent to the jail for efficiency. As first appearances are coming through from the jail, it makes it easier for security and the sheriff's office to bring those inmates over to recorder's court when they're right next to each other. They also looked at the new sheriff administration with the consolidation of the marshal's office and the sheriff's office, that it would potentially make sense to have that administration on the jail site and only leave the sheriff's office functions related to court services in the judicial center. And again, they looked at a city government facility in a renovated building as opposed to building a new building. So option 3A would be the judicial center on the existing site with a parking structure. The phasing of that would be, this is the current government center with the wings. It would include the demolition of the wings, the construction of a new judicial building, the demolition of the government center tower, and the construction of a parking structure on that existing site. So again, just to remind you, if you're at home watching or if you're here and you want to type in your question as opposed to coming up to the microphone, you're welcome to do that, to go to menti.com, M-E-N-T-I dot com, and the code is 55395403 or you can also call And we are here to answer your questions this evening. So I want to spend a little bit of time going through the projects that are on the draft recommended list for the SPOLOST. This is the summary budget for those projects and I'll go through them individually. The judicial center is estimated at 200 million. It would be approximately 310,000 square feet with 500 to 600 space parking facilities and it would house the space for all the judges and the courts, superior state municipal magistrate courts, probate court, and juvenile court. Again, the judges and the clerk's offices for each of those courts, the district attorney, public defender, accountability courts, as well as other court-related functions. The next project, as we spent our time with the citizens in 2019 and we hear on a regular basis, Parks and Recreation is very important to the citizens. So the first project after the judicial center would be Parks and Recreation at 45 million. This would include park improvements at Flat Rock Park, Carver Park, Cooper Creek Park, Benning Park, Lake Bottom Park, Theo McGee Park, and Woodruff Farm Soccer Complex. This would include replacement of the restrooms, pavilions, picnic tables, playground equipment, and also adding an enhancement to those parks, some of those parks with mini splash pads that is similar to the one that's on Bay Avenue at Cooper Creek, South Common Civic Center, Carver Park, Liberty District, City Services Center, and Lake Bottom Park. Also included in the Parks and Recreation project would be pool or splash pad replacements for Shirley Winston, Salmon Road, or Rigdon Park, and this could include a pool and a splash pad connected at each one of those facilities. And then there would be other park improvements throughout the city. Public safety facility renovations, this is the renovation and upgrade to three fire stations. This would be fire station four, six, and eight. Station four is St. Mary's Road, just off of St. Mary's Road. Station six is off of Brown Avenue and station eight is off of Whitesville Road and this would include full renovation of those facilities. They were built in the 60s and 70s and so there are some, some things that have changed over time, allowing for females and a separate dorm area for the females and some separation as well as renovation of the public safety building. It was built in the early 90s and is in dire need of some renovations. Public safety vehicles and equipment, 24 million. This would include vehicles and equipment for the fire department, fire trucks, ambulances, administrative vehicles, and other fire department equipment. For the sheriff's office, pursuit vehicles, replacement of their range target system, administrative vehicles, inmate transport vans, bomb squad, robot, as well as other sheriff's department equipment. For the police department, their top item was the River Road Tower replacement. This is for radio transmission throughout our city, pursuit vehicles, SUVs, motorcycles, and a mobile command vehicle as well as other police department equipment. Transportation, we hear a lot from our citizens about resurfacing, so this would be dedicated funding for resurfacing as well as sidewalks and trails throughout the city. Stormwater flood abatement at 20 million. This is another item that we hear a lot from our citizens about drainage issues throughout Columbus. We had a consultant that's reviewed a lot of our stormwater issues and came to council in May of 2020 and outlined a number of projects that needed attention and this would provide for funding for those projects that was outlined in that report, anywhere and really throughout the community, anywhere from the historic district all the way out to East Columbus and in North Columbus as well. Bull Creek Clubhouse and Bridge at 4 million. This would be to replace the golf course clubhouse and replace a bridge out at Bull Creek as well as renovations of the Oxbo Creek Clubhouse. Heavy equipment and vehicles, 14 million. This would mainly be for Public Works, Parks and Rec, and engineering to include tractors, trailers, mowers, dump trucks, excavators, all of that equipment that Public Works and Parks and Rec utilizes for the citizens of our community. Information technology, 5 million. This is replacing computer equipment throughout the government. Economic development, 9 million. This is additional infrastructure and site preparation for Muskogee Technology Park as well as targeting a South Columbus redevelopment and other economic development initiatives. $5 million for a trade center renovation or replacement of their parking garage. Currently, they have 397 spaces and would like to have at least 500 spaces for their facility. We had a bond issue in 2003 that's about $4 million and it would be coupled with this to replace that garage structure. Civic Center, 5 million. Again, the civic center was built with the 1993 SPOLOST. It would be roof replacement, sound system replacement, LED display, video board and scoreboard and the HVAC system, so a complete upgrade of the civic center. And just to talk a little bit about the sales tax rate in Columbus, we are currently at 8%. If the SPOLOST were approved in November of '21, it would not take effect until April 1st of '22. We would have a period of nine months where the sales tax would go to 9%. The T-SPOLOST ends in December of '22. The voters would then decide whether the T-SPOLOST for the region is passed or not and that would determine whether it stays at 9% or reverts back to 8%. This just illustrates that period of nine months would be from April '22 to December of '22. This provides a history of the sales tax in Muskogee County. There are two local option sales taxes. One was from 1976, the other was passed in 2009. There have been five education SPOLOST for the school district. The city has had two SPOLOST, one in '93 and one that we call the '99 SPOLOST that started in April of 2000 and then the current T-SPOLOST which ends December 31st of '22. This is our third public meeting that we've held. We had one June 14th and one June 17th and this is the final public meeting of this series. And again, you can input your questions on menti.com at 55395403 is the code. You're welcome to call 706-225-3002 and we'll be happy to answer your questions that way as well. So at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question, invite you up to the microphone, we'll be happy to hear your question or your comments as well.
Sure Pam. Is there any way that we can also talk at all, you know, like on a public agenda timeframe? No? Yes? Like, you know, anyway, you threw out 310,000 square feet, $200 million, that's $700 a square foot. What you didn't do is you gave a package, but you didn't give a breakdown. That building over there, the school district, it costs $30 million at 100,000 square feet. So basically, three-
Just to correct you now, that was a 12 and a half million dollar building, okay?
How much?
12.5 million.
The school district?
The school district.
No, it was 30 million. I know that-
Check the facts.
I know my facts.
I'm just here to educate you and give you the facts, okay?
Isaiah, it was 30 million. Anyway, 100,000 square feet over there, okay?
It was 12.5. I just wanted, for the record, okay?
Well, what I was gonna say to you is that's outlandish. What it hasn't broke down is how much it's gonna cost for demolition? We'd like to know, do you have the figures for how much demolition is for that building? If you just tear it down? How much is it Pam?
The total that our construction manager has estimated is 7 million for the demolition of both the wings and the government center.
And what about the architect? They usually get 8 to 10%, so that would be 20 million dollars?
We have the detail of that 200 million and how it's broken down between construction, demolition, FFNE, and all of that. That was presented at a prior council meeting and we have that information.
Well, I'm sorry, I haven't been in the fray for a long time. But usually, school districts, 8 to 10%. Usually the city does the same thing, so 10% of 200 million is 20 million dollars or 16 million, lowball it. And to me, that's outlandish. There's other ways of getting at a better price because most of the time, you know, they don't do the best work. I promise you, I can show you buildings all day long. Now, 9% sales tax is gonna be the highest sales tax in the state. There's 159 counties and we'll be the highest. I mean, no one else has an O-LAST and a LOST that I know of, okay? And then with a T-SPOLOST, and what I really is upsetting is this same city council pushed the T-SPOLOST, which in essence garnered around $360 million for 10 years. And the thing is that we get to keep about 270 and about 90 million goes to those outlying 15 counties. Why in God's green earth did you guys push something like that when we have potholes all over this city and why would we not be, let's say, covetous as far as keeping that money? And why did we go along with that when there was, I think, only two other districts and I think the majority, the vast majority of those regions basically voted it down because they knew that that wasn't enhancing us? I mean, we're in competition with these other outlying counties. We need potholes in this town covered and the T-SPOLOST, I told you guys from the very beginning, was a worse scenario. Are you guys, you know, you said, "Well, for a period of time, it's gonna be 9%." Are you guys gonna be pushing for this T-SPOLOST? Are you gonna actually make a revelation that this is not a good situation for Muskogee County residents?
Well, let me just say, when you say "we," I prefaced my remarks by saying, "We're here to educate." And so we're not campaigning for a SPOLOST or a T-SPOLOST or any of that and, but yeah, there are 16 counties in the region.
Yes, sir, I realize.
And the one thing that we will do when they go forward with it is submit a list of projects. And we submit a list of projects because if you don't submit a list of projects and it passes, it applies to you anyway and you don't have any projects.
Well, the problem is-
So, we want to talk about the special purpose local option sales tax tonight.
Well, I understand, but there's a correlation between these taxes. Every time a tax comes forward and that tax makes, it's gonna cost 1%.
So I hope I answered your question. Let me say that again for those listening. The transportation special purpose local option sales tax applies to 16 counties. And whether, whether we submit projects or not, and let's say that we don't submit a list of projects and we collect 400 million dollars in Muskogee County, if we don't submit any projects because the mayor and council say, "We don't support it, so we're not gonna submit projects," and then it passes, your 400 million dollars will go somewhere else because you didn't have any projects. Just be clear. So we will always submit a list of projects. Now, someone else will have to decide whether you-
But see, the thing is, is last time, 90 million went to the other 15 counties. Likewise, if we pass this thing again, since we're collecting more money, 100 million will go to those other 15 counties and that troubles me terribly.
Let me say this, and you're right. We were a donor county.
Yep.
But we didn't make legislation.
I understand.
Locally. And we didn't get to pass that legislation. That was done at the state capitol.
I understand.
And so it was done at the state capitol. We didn't write the rules and so we have to play ball by the rules that were provided and that's what we've done and we think that's in the best interest of the citizens of Muskogee County. But-
As long as 9 of 16 move it forward.
Yeah, yeah. It only takes 9 of 16 as a majority to say, "We, we're gonna do a T-SPOLOST."
Oh, I understand, I understand.
So, but I want to make sure the citizens at home are able to hear about this special So, but I want to make sure the citizens at home are able to hear about this special purpose local option sales tax. We want to educate, and so, do you have a question related to that?
Well, the other, well, not a question, it's more of like, you and I talked before, your mom was a house cleaning lady, my mom was a house cleaning lady-
That's right.
For the rich white people, okay? No, I'm just being honest. And I mowed their lawns and did their gardens, and so, I've always protected the lower class, the people who didn't have money, and the middle class, and also the people who are elderly on fixed income. And this one percent sales tax is gonna take, at least, you know, if you spend thirty thousand dollars for a car, it's gonna take three hundred bucks. The average family is gonna spend thirty thousand dollars in discretionary funds. It's gonna cost families at the minimum three hundred to five hundred. This is a sacrifice. And what has troubled me in the past, when I've been in front of city council, is that I've asked for a list of, you know, there's a, you've said this before, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And the thing is, I've asked time and time again, like when that's, the government center was deteriorating, it's basically like a slumlord mentality, is that if you let something, you're bringing in the taxes, you're bringing in the rent, but you're not keeping up with the maintenance. What I would like from you to show transparency is basically where you've spent money not just reacting, because that's what basically a slumlord does. He waits till things just go to H-E-double-L, right? And then that's when he reacts, okay? Well, the same thing has happened here. When you guys had the water problems, I had the flower shop on Benavis Road. I had to have that backwater regulator, and if I had a problem, it would shut it off. You guys didn't even adhere to that, and because I was in front of city council at the time, and all they had to do is turn off the lights at that time, and it wouldn't have the flooding and the problems that it is. And you've basically been chasing after something because people were incompetent to actually react to that time. And the other thing that I wanna ask is, anything structurally wrong with that government center where you'd wanna have to tear that thing down? Is there anything structurally wrong with the government center where you'd wanna have to demolish the whole thing?
Well, let me just, first of all, say that the government center building is fifty years old, and-
It's how old? Fifty years?
Fifty, five, zero, fifty years old. And when that building was constructed, I believe it cost eleven million dollars fifty years ago. And they had to value engineer that building because that was over budget. It should've had six elevators, they cut them to four, and it should've had a lot of other things that-
Yes, sir.
We're not gonna get into tonight, but didn't happen. And I will tell you that it took a number of years when the building was completed-
Yes, sir.
-to get a certificate of occupancy, because it just, it was, it did not meet the standard. And so, and then years following the construction, of course, there has been prison labor, doing electrical work, plumbing work, and carpenter work, and taking a wall out here, and putting a wall in here, and just, but that wasn't, I don't know, none of us were around or in city government when a lot of that occurred. And so, we have to live with what occurred, and we're the fix-it people. And so, we're trying to make sure that that building is safe and not a health hazard, and that's why we're spending money on it today. And, but I could go on and on about the government center-
I understand.
But that's water under the bridge at this point. And so, if, I can tell you this, if the voters decide that they want a new judicial center, what I can tell you that, at least, I'm committed to as city manager, and I know the mayor and council members would be committed to, is that this building would be dealt with in a different way than that old government center building. That government center building today is dealt with in a different way than it was in the past. You can't take a wall out, put a door in without getting an architectural stamp, seal. You can't go run wiring through the ceiling and doing all these things that they were doing before. And so, we're doing it right today, but it's a, it's a whole lot late. And so, the building is old, and we are doing everything, the money that we're spending on that building right now, five-plus million dollars, we're spending that money on this building, knowing that this building is not gonna last you another ten years or twenty years, but we're doing it because citizens and employees are coming into that building every day, and we need to ensure their safety. We are putting sprinkler systems in, and we're putting all kinds of things in to ensure safety. We have a responsibility to do that, that's what we're doing. And so, what is being presented to you is what's best practices as you have seen, and what we need to do or recommend as professional managers, the professional team, for your children and my children and grandchildren to do business and make sure Columbus remains competitive with other similar-sized cities. So, that's what, that's what-
I understand. Isaiah, my house is forty years old. In fact, your wife was my insurance agent for a decade or more, right? And she could tell you, and I really need for you to come out to my place, it's one-three-eight-three-zero Yupitoy Lane, it's a six hundred thousand dollar home.
Sure.
It's like it was brand new.
So, I'm gonna let you finish this, then we're gonna-
You know why?
We're gonna have to take someone else.
I understand. You know why? Because I took care of it from the very get-go. I do the pressure washing. I can go over to that government center now, and I was in that courtroom for a situation, not because of me, but I sat there and watched, looked at the windows, and they were so scarred because no one took a pressure washer and pressure washed it, and so, it created an ugly film, and it was just nasty looking, right? And all it needed was pressure washing. I pressure washed my driveway, which is almost a football field long, all right? Myself, I'm seventy years old. My sidewalk, the same way, and my house, and I paint it, and I keep it up. And I asked you guys a long time ago, I liked the last ten years of just, and I'll leave it with this, I'd like for transparency, and you put it up on your website, how much you have spent incrementally for the last ten years prior to the times you started having problems with the water situation? And that's what I'd like for you guys to do.
And Paul, I have, we have no problem with transparency, that's what we do.
Yeah.
I mean, from, you know, all you gotta do is do an open records request, that's what government-
You know how much that costs?
Well-
You know how much an open record, I'm asking you as a government, you are the stewards of our money.
Well-
And therefore, if I ask you for transparency, you should have no problem at all putting it on your government website. This is an itemized list of all what we spent ten years ago prior to the problems that you started having just a few years ago.
Any records that we have that are readily available, we can get them for you, and we don't, we don't set costs, that's set by-
Two hundred dollars last time I did something like that, two hundred dollars.
And how did, how did we determine the two hundred dollars? Was that set by the state legislature? The cost per page or whatever?
Yes, cost per page.
Okay, it's not local.
And that's just ridiculous, because see, it shouldn't be just Paul Olson's eyes on it, it should be everybody who's watching this, seeing how their money, their tax money's being spent, and are you being good, are you being proactive-
Sure.
-in maintenance, or are you being reactive? And I'll let you go, you have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
I gotta go watch, uh, North Carolina State Department.
All right, thank you for coming. Are there other questions?
Thank y'all very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you, but I wanna know, you got Liberty District.
Yes.
Isn't that a TAD?
Yes.
And why isn't it a sales tax?
Why isn't it?
Why is it here? Why is it part of the sales tax presentation, the sploß?
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a tax allocation district.
Well, let me just say, tax allocation districts are created in boundaries, there's a line drawn that creates a boundary for a tax allocation district.
Right.
This is for those watching by television. And so, what happens, once it becomes a tax allocation district, we freeze the property tax when there's a project, so that the growth will be available to be used to encourage an economic development. And so, like there's growth in the Uptown TAD, there's growth in the various different other TADs that we have. And so, I'm trying to follow your question, you said, why is it not-
If it's a tax allocation district, then the people who's running that TAD do all the improvements in it and pay their money back with the tip, you know? If it's, because we got about, what, six or seven TADs around here?
Well, let me just-
They should not be in our sploß.
Well, they're not-
Well, I saw Liberty District up there, that's why I asked, and you-
Oh, that's, that's to put money, a splash, you know the mini splash pad down at Bay Avenue? Where the water features and the kid go, kids go down and play?
So, that part is not in the Liberty TAD?
It's in the TAD, but it's a, a project that would be, the splash pad, the splash pad down at Bay costs about a half million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars. And so, what this is proposing is that if it passes, you'll have one that at some point will be placed in the Liberty District, you will have one at Lake Bottom, one here at the City Services Center, one at Cooper Creek, and these little mini splash pads, 'cause right now, when you go down on Saturday mornings, you see all these little kids down on Bay.
I understand that, but I also understand the redevelopment powers bill too.
So, you, you think we should take it-
But I don't see why we, yeah, let them do it.
So, you should think it should not be in this-
No, no, let the TAD people handle that. That ain't no but for-
So, take it out of this and tell the-
You can't but for that now.
Yeah. So, you wanna take it off the list for the Liberty District?
Yeah, that is in their TAD.
Tell the TAD people-
That's their TAD.
Y'all go put one in the Liberty District, Nadine doesn't want one there.
No, that's not what I'm saying, the law, you got to look at the law. That could be, the people in Bev City could want stuff in their TAD.
Well, I understand this now.
These TADs should be, these TADs should be-
Well, here's how the TAD works, so let's say-
I know how they work, I got the whole-
I'm talking to the people watching at home.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, when the TAD generates, and we could say, "We're not gonna have it in the sales tax," right? So, what will happen, when the Liberty District creates five hundred thousand dollars, we'll take that money from the TAD and put a pad there, 'cause the mayor and council can decide to use that money from the TAD for infrastructure. And they could do that, you're right.
Okay, so now, in that case-
But is that what, let me understand, is that what you want?
No, I just want the TADs, you said, we always using the but for, so the TADs supposed to do themselves.
But that can happen.
Okay, now, the point you just made, why can't we wait till all of these TADs, which supposed to bring about a billion dollars? Why can't we wait for them to do all of this other stuff?
Because, because there's plenty more that needs to be done in the Liberty District, for example. You know, you could use the growth in taxes from the TAD to say, "We're gonna streetscape it in front of the Liberty Theater, and it's gonna look just like Broadway. We're gonna put wrought iron benches, we're gonna put the wrought iron light posts, and we're gonna put-"
I understand, I understand that, Mr. City Manager, but that is, when you're, when we are invested, those TADs are like an investment. So, when those investment pay off, when that money pay off, then you can take that and bill your government center.
Let me give you, let me give you an example of how slow the growth is. Angelica, I want you to tell me how much growth is in TAD in the Liberty District compared to the other TADs. I want you to hear this when she gets to it, and so, she's gonna look it up for me, and I want you to see that because when you ride through the Liberty District, there's not much going on. And so, therefore, the growth is just not there, and it's not gonna be there until there's some redevelopment in the Liberty District.
That's what the TADs are supposed to do, to redevelop it, that's why it's a TAD. You made it a TAD, and in the paper, you said it was gonna bring about-
I got your point.
So much.
We got you.
So, all these other TADs that's giving you money, that money that where there is growth, they should be building this government center, you know, but, but that's neither here nor there, because we need to wait on them TADs to produce-
You're gonna have to wait.
Otherwise, otherwise, we-
How much, what's the growth in the Liberty District? A hundred and forty-six thousand. Give me another, an example, what's the growth in the Uptown? Two million.
Okay, now, that two million dollars, you can use to go pay for your goodness.
Well, I get your point, okay? I got you.
You follow me?
And so, we go back, yeah.
Yeah, but, okay, now, this O-last, I had promised my children after I came out there, after I came out of coma, I promised them I wasn't gonna look at this stuff, but I looked at it today. I campaigned hard for that two thousand and eight sales tax. And the driving forces around it was the police officers, they were out there with signs and billboards, and our streets were going into decay. And that's why we went to Wetherington at Dennis and asked him about, you know, talked about the loss, and we got it passed. Mr. City Manager, our streets are terrible. We need to repurpose this, that O-last was not for putting roofs on buildings and stuff like that. That's what your, that's what your, your military for operations and maintenance do that kind of stuff. Let's look, we need to repurpose this O-last and go ahead on and fix our streets, 'cause they are terrible.
Well, let me just say, and you're right about the, the sales tax-
And I'm not here to jump on nobody, but that's true.
Seventy percent of O-lasts is for public safety and thirty percent for roads and infrastructure.
Right.
But then there came the T-sploß, okay? And, and we're getting over, more than three hundred million dollars and thirty million in discretionary dollars out of T-sploß for roads, projects. And, and so, over the last ten years, I will just say this, and then we're gonna go to someone else, but we have spent four hundred and twenty-two million dollars on roads in Columbus, Georgia, in the last ten years.
But they're not residential streets though.
Let me, let me finish, and out of that four hundred and twenty-two million, we spent two hundred and fifty-four million on the south side.
I can understand that, but those are not residential streets. And being that you said that, were it not for T-sploß, we wouldn't even see an improvement in South Columbus. Now, I'm gonna go one more, then I'm gonna leave you alone.
There, let me tell you, there's much work to be done, and even when we do this, we're still gonna have more work to do, so I just wanna be clear.
My grandma's name was Sally Mae White.
Mine, Sally Mae Sanders.
And she talked, this is every water bill that I paid, you know, one of the folders, and they always, what I like about the Water Works, they send you these pamphlets to read. And it looks like to me, they're doing a lot on stormwater damage, and I believe it because my sewage is like way higher, it costs more money to flush the toilet than it does to drink a glass of water. So, why are we doing stormwater damage in here?
Well, you know, you know your sewage is always Columbus Water Works.
Yeah, well, everything belonged, what, what does stormwater damage, who that belong to?
Stormwater, the city, we had a storm water runoff, but the sewer and all that is Water Works.
Yeah, but, but the sewage, all of this sewage, this is, the city had this much sewage just for itself, what, what my sewage?
Stormwater, yeah, when that water-
That's flooding the street?
Yes.
So, who put the pipes in to relieve the flooding?
We do.
From where? From the city planning, from your-
I'll just use an example, from the Civic Center on Sixth Avenue all the way up to Fourteenth Street, we spent thirty-seven million dollars on, on storm abatement, thirty-seven million.
So, our employees do it and not Columbus Water Works?
No, 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 we contracted out.
Yeah, okay.
But, but it's the city and not, not the Water Works. They handle sanitary sewer, we handle stormwater.
Oh, okay, well, I'm just saying, good luck, but a lot of this stuff that's on this, this O-last can be taken care of with military for operations and maintenance. Now, that money that y'all put in, where y'all gonna save ten percent of the loss, I was reading it to, to, to fix the things as they tear up, if y'all gonna save ten percent. You got a little thing where y'all gonna save ten percent.
Oh, you're talking about where we asked the state legislature to allow us to spend a certain percentage for maintenance and operations, that did not get approved.
They didn't approve, so no, where y'all can't keep forty million dollars and put it in, and put it in a fund so it can make our-
No, we can't, we can't do that.
So, it can make our bond rating look good.
No, we can't do it.
Okay, thanks a lot, Mr. City Manager.
All right, thank you, Nadine. Mr. Sanders, how are you?
I'm doing fine, Mr. City Manager, thank you. Greetings to everyone. My name is Nathaniel Sanderson, and I just got a few comments, questions, and one of them is that I always- I just got a few comments, questions, and one of them is that I always start off, when we have these splosses, I always start off with a no. I don't like splosses, okay? And for several reasons, and one of the reasons, Mr. Olson gave a pretty good example, and but he used the three hundred dollar matrix. That it would increase a family that earning thirty thousand dollars a year, that it would increase them, that one cent would increase them by three hundred dollars. But it will also take them to, take us to a nine percent, which in true fact is twenty-seven hundred dollars. So when you take a a family that's that that's here trying to work family, two families.
I'm trying to understand the twenty-seven hundred dollars.
My my point is, the tax is heavy on on the small, low income.
Sure, sure, sure.
Somebody that that's earning a hundred thousand dollars a year.
It's a regressive tax, yeah.
It the the sploss is is really across-the-board tax. And so whether I make thirty thousand dollars a year or I make.
It's a regressive tax, yeah.
Right, so so to me, I always start off with the with the no on that, because of that reason right there.
Yeah.
But then some splosses are good, so all splosses are not bad, and all T-Losses and all that. But this one right here, going to nine percent is really concerning. And 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 we're we're getting to where we're taxing people out of the ability to live and 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 earn a good living in this city. Twenty-seven hundred dollars is a lot of money for a family of two or three coming out of their check to pay, um on, just to pay consumption tax. Which is what it is, it's a consumption tax. So I I I really, I'm really concerned about that. I wish we would consider some alternative ways, some ways of raising revenue in a different way. One of the things that I, when I was sitting up here listening to the presentation, I think you talked about option four. Uh what was option four again?
So option four would be new facilities on a new site.
Right, so I've been, every, anybody that would listen to me for the last year or so, I've been trying to s- to get the city to understa- to see this. There are a hundred and sixty-eight hours in a week, okay? That government center down there is open forty hours a week. It's on prime real estate, it is not revenue generating. We need to get, we need to get the government center out of the, down there, and what my my recommendation, I'm with my, I'm just one citizen in the community, okay? But one of the things I would like to see is the government center come from down there, option four, come from down there, come out here, get some land out here. We got interstate access, we got all this stuff right here, we got half of the government center already down here, which I don't know how we come up with this concept. Half the government center on this side of town, half the government center on the other side of town. It's it's kinda confusing. Why want the, I I I, I'm just making a few statements, and I I don't, cause I don't think you can answer the question tonight, the the question, but I just.
Well, I can answer some of them.
Okay, so my my my, I I would really, if if we're gonna do a sploss, option four to me makes the most sense. Turn that land over down there to a developer, let them build a hotel that can bring in five, six hundred beds. And we can go after some of these big conventions, and we can regenerate, that that would mean that that building and that lot down there will be generating revenue. A hundred and sixty-eight hours a week, uh as opposed to forty hours a week.
Let me just say this, Ms. Sanders, that when we went out in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty with those four options. I don't know, I can't even remember the number of public meetings we did like this, but we had the little keypads where people could vote.
Right.
On which option, one, two, three, or four. And the options that you see are what, at every forum, every session, and even we did it on, they could do it on. On e- online, the people said this, not us.
Okay.
That's why you see that.
And and that's why I'm appealing to leadership, because sometimes leadership has to lead. And and when leadership leads, we will, right now, right, my whole point is, right now, if we go back down there and pu- build a new, the the option four is saying tear it down anyway. And if you, if you deed that land out to somebody, whatever they wanna do with it, to me, I think it it will only enhance the downtown area. Because right, like I said, right now, that that building is empty, and that that's my, that's a statement that I wanted to make.
Sure.
About that, if you wanna respond to it, I'll I'll listen, but I do have another question or statement.
Go ahead, no, go ahead with you.
So my second, my my second one, and my last one is, if the T- if the sploss pass, do we have set-asides for black businesses to participate?
If the sploss pass?
It's the passage, the the construction, the construction, like, sort of like when, I think it was Affleck, when they did their um building out there, they set aside a certain amount of money. Said that this will go to contractors, not minority contractors. Black contractors, I'm just asking.
Well, no, no, we don't have a set aside.
Is it possible?
Well, uh, no, no, pardon. Yeah, we have, you know, doing business, DBE requirements, but we don't have a set aside for.
I mean, cause we do it for women, we do it for minorities.
Disadvantaged business.
Yeah, we do it for other ethnic groups, I'm just, I'm saying specifically for black business.
No.
We don't, okay.
No.
Is it possible, that's my second, is it possible to do?
Well, I think, I I think, I I don't vote, but anything's possible if if someone brings it up, and then there's six votes. But we don't have a set aside for quote, black businesses.
No, I don't wanna quote black business, I'm saying straight up black business.
Well, I I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I understand that.
Right, okay, I mean.
No, but the answer is no.
Okay. Yeah, that's it, did you, did you want me to stay here while you answer my questions or?
Well, I thought, I thought, I.
No, he said go ahead with the second one, cause he was gonna wait till I finished the second.
Repeat that question again, that you want me to answer.
No, we were talking about the um the area, option four.
Oh, option four, I, yeah, my my response was simply um that we took it to the people. And I, it wasn't my decision or the mayor's decision, or, you know, it was what the people said.
So 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 then just for clarification, option four is no longer on the table?
The option that we presented.
Right, the option four today, it's no longer on the table.
And that was?
Option, option three A is the recommended option that council will consider. That council will make the final decision on which option is selected.
So all four options are still on the table?
Right, but the recommendation and what's included in this presentation is option three A, which is a new judicial center on the existing site. An administration in a repurposed building somewhere else in Columbus.
Okay, yeah, so I I just will appeal to the citizens and to the council, everybody, consider option four, thank you.
We'll we'll make sure that your, that that your recommendation is included in our notes. That council will see those notes, we'll do that.
Are there other questions from individuals that are here this evening? No additional questions? See if we've got any questions that are coming in online. And we do not have any questions that have been submitted um online this evening. We will stay for about fifteen more minutes, um for those who want to submit a question or call in.
Nadine, did you have anything else? No.
No, ma'am.
Nope. They sure did, they did not.
But again, just in closing, I wanna make one comment, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. City Manager.
Say that all of the comments that you've made, Nadine, Paul Olson, and you, Ms. Sanders, Nate Sanders, will be included in what we um take back to city council.
So again, just to remind individuals, you can go on the city's website, the comment card is on the city's website, where you can fill the comment card out, uh submit your questions. You can also contact me directly by email at p hodge at columbus ga dot org. You can call my office, seven zero six two two five four zero two two. And we're happy to make sure that your comments or your questions are noted uh as we make our presentations to city council.
Yeah, and let me just say that I had the finance director do a little research while we were sitting here. I know that Mr. Olson made the comment about no other um cities or counties with uh nine percent sales tax. And had her to do uh some research, uh I believe Atlanta is eight point five percent. Eight point nine percent in Atlanta, and and uh and a lot of us, based on what she pulled up. That would be the only one, others are eight percent, seven percent, eight percent. And of course, you heard Deputy City Manager Hodge say that the sales tax here would go to nine percent for nine months. Uh and then voters could, would decide whether they want to keep it at nine percent. But I asked her to research Phoenix City also, because I knew theirs was higher than ours, and in Phoenix City, it's nine point five percent. So uh if you, if you're shopping Phoenix City ever, uh you you pay it nine point five percent. You wanna check to see if there are any final questions?
No more.
No more questions. Uh if there are no other questions from the audience, um we really want to thank you for coming. We want to thank those for tuning in uh via CCG TV. And um mayor, did you have any closing comments? So uh thank you for coming, let me pause to recognize uh Councilor John House and his wife Marilyn, they're here, thank you for being here. Uh Councilor House, uh represents Columbus citywide, um and um, yes. And so thank you for coming, the mayor's gonna make the final comments.
No, 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 I I wish Paul were still here, cause I, there was one thing that he said that wasn't accurate. He mentioned that the city council pushed and campaigned for that T-Splos, we didn't. And it was precisely because we were a donor county. And so the the council took the position, and I can't speak for the previous mayor, but the council took the position that they wanted to allow the citizens to evaluate the project. Cause we knew going in that we were the biggest dog in that pen, and others were relying on us. But we did get, and I don't know the numbers Pam does, but the the vast majority of the projects, what most of the other smaller counties uh were after was that discretionary funding. Cause a lot of those folks were filling potholes on highways with sand. So um so I just wanted to make sure that 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 was cleared up, and I'll, I know how to catch up with Paul, I'll call him and I'll tell him. But I just wanted to make sure he knew that 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 part was 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 mistaken, he was right on a lot of the other things he said, but that one was an error. And again, thank y'all for being here.